All right, well, welcome everyone. And we'll start off the meeting by sustaining Pledge of Allegiance. If anyone would please join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, here we are at the February 21st, 2024 regular school board meeting. And we'll start off with administrator's report on the agenda posting and notification of the meeting to the media.
The agenda was posted at Three Lakes School, Sugar Camp School in the town of Sugar Camp via email, the town of Three Lakes, the town of Monaco, and the Demer Library. Media notified via email included the Vilas County News, the Northwoods River News, WRGO News, WXPR Radio, and WACD, WATK Radio.
All right, very good. Thank you for that report. Next we go to amendments and approval of agenda. Any amendments?
There are no amendments.
All right, I will seek a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. I'll second.
All right, so a motion by Stacy, second by Alicia. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None heard. Motion passes five zero. Next we go to approve the minutes of the January 24th, 2024 regular meeting and the February 7th, 2024 special meeting. I can take motion separate or one motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the January 24th, 2024 regular meeting and the February 7th, 2024 special meeting as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Alicia, second by Michelle. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next we go to approve vouchers/cheque register for the period of January 19th, 2024 through February 15th, 2024.
I'll make the motion to approve checks stated January 19th, 2024 through February 15th, 2024 for accounts payable, ACH checks number 232400171 through 232400201, regular checks number 129270 through 129409, manual checks number 5616 through 5632, and wire transfers number 202300009 through 202300015 in the amount of $657,071.49, and ACH payroll checks number 900042089 through 900042331, and regular payroll checks number 59336 through 59338 in the amount of $352,760.61 for a total amount of $1,009,832.10.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Josh, second by Michelle. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none, I'll call a motion to a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right, thank you for that. Next we go to the public comments. Would anyone wish to speak to any of the agenda items tonight? And which item in, I'll go around and ask anybody else. Anyone else? Okay, Anne, floor is yours.
All right. I have written out my comments, so I can keep them very brief. I'm talking about items, I believe it's G and H.
GH?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. As a career educator, a school volunteer, and an involved Three Lakes community member, I support the Three Lakes School District in providing opportunities for student and community learning through academic studies as well as extracurricular activities. I became interested in the school forest project when discussions began about the possibility of a land purchase on County A and continued seeking to understand many aspects of the project up to today. I believe there is merit in having students and community members learn about the natural environment, learn within a natural environment setting, and strive to understand the issues and challenges of maintaining that environment, often referred to as environmental education. I also believe there is merit in having students participate in a school trap club, which provides learning the skills of trap shooting, developing the discipline of preparing for competitions, and learning the responsibilities of gun ownership and use. The setting of goals and outcomes, the planning and implementation of a project to address the complexity of meeting all of the above learning on one site required ongoing communication among all stakeholders. Such communication needed to be open, transparent, and based upon information that was reliable and verifiable. One would expect that seeking clarification about various aspects of the project by asking questions, doing research about school policy, potential funding, and applicable legal requirements would be encouraged and necessary. Considerable time, funding, and efforts to provide support have been put forth by school staff, school district electors, and volunteers over the past several years. Looking at the brief agenda descriptions regarding the various aspects of this project, it seems like the board is at a point of having to make some decisions about continuing the project as they have come to understand it. Therefore, I encourage the board to openly and thoughtfully consider, number one, consider the challenges of developing and maintaining the current uses identified for the site and the processes required to achieve them. Number two, consider options for revision of goals, timeline, and processes requiring the consideration of other existing local resources to meet the anticipated learning outcomes. Number three, consider the commitment of investment of time, funds, and other district and community resources needed in both the short term and long term for however this project goes forward. And number four, please consider assuring that students understand how the project and decisions about it have come to this point, and then encourage them to have a voice in determining how this project moves forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Anne. All right, John.
For many of you who may not know me, my name is John Grossman. I do not live in the school district, but our family owns land that was placed in trust for grandchildren and kids on the west side of property on A. I'm a longtime resident of, I grew up in the school district, I did do that, and went away to school and so on, came back and worked in the area from '77 to '85 as the area program manager for TNR, for the three county area. Managed the ranger stations, Crandon, Ryanlander, Eagle River, Lake Tomahawk, and a few folks on the national forest, or on the state forests. In that role, I dealt with county forestry, private forestry, and fire in that area. The area has close to a quarter of a million acres of public land, county land that is managed, that we've dealt with, about 175 acres, 175,000 acres in Oneida County. The realities are, as a forester, you don't manage public land for the people, you manage it with them. So you folks have a role in growing citizens that can be participants in the decision process, so effective decisions are made on that land. So that's a role I had for a long time in my work career. Currently, I work with the Board of Directors for the Forest History Association of Wisconsin, and we partner with the school forest program. So there are a variety of settings that I'm engaged with, community forester, school forest lands, and of course, this one should be near and dear to my heart as a part of my, you know, old home front. Our organization is planning to work with the school forest program to celebrate their 100-year anniversary in 2028. You had lands enrolled in the system since 1938, and I'm so pleased to know that we've got folks like Terry May and Justin Zeus who are working to make this happen. These are the spark in the vapor, see things about to happen, I think. The 40 that you have on A, and you have, there's other 40s you have besides this one, but the 40 on A was initially logged on ice roads with oxen in the late, in the 1890s, okay? Our family, my grandpa moved up into the area in 1904. And what he did, on that property, there is a stand of very large white pine. They were too large to move with oxen on ice roads to get them out of here. So in about 1915, you'll see, there's a railroad grade that crosses it. They're valuable for the sawmill, but the only way that they could get to them is build a spur in there, Thunder Lake, Narrow Beach, and they logged them off, one log to a car, and they brought them out, okay? So that's a remnant, that's part of the history on your property. The Board of Commissioners of public lands, about 19, about 2012 or so, decided they logged it and decided that they're going to plant white pine. White pine is very problematic to try to grow. There's a bug called a white pine tip weevil that attacks it. So they, but they did plant it experimentally. They did some deer retardant fencing around it. They logged it within a design that made it kind of unpleasant to walk through for you and for deer. And then they did, they did cultural treatments through the series of years to get it going. So they had a lot of money invested in when they were encouraged to sell it to you. The realities are that it's an experimental forest that you now own a part of. Justin and I talked to a researcher that used to run the Argon Field Station, a guy named Terry Strong, who knows what's out there and can come to be a resource for you in educating kids on what happened there. What happened over time? Why did they do what they did? And how are you going to get that to a stage where it could come to be a success? It's a learning prospect there. On that same property, you have a vernal pond, a spring pond, spring peepers, okay? One of the folks that came to join you when Gretchen Marshall came here to talk about developing a forest plan was a gal named Heather Stricker. She's a doctoral candidate at UW Stevens Point in environmental ed with a focus on, she has keen interest in the vernal pond story. I think, given that you're going to develop that, and I don't know where you're at in the trap range issue, but it's in the range fan that last I saw, the deposition of lead. So I think it'd be a tidy idea to go do at least a baseline study of that water at this point, to see what happens. Again, a study issue for kids. We have what appears to be a marker tree on the line between what we know is the settlement at Indian Lake and what we also know was a sugar collecting, sugar bush up by the XPR Tower. It's a little problematic yet because it's got heart rot and you can't exactly determine. But my sense is, because I'd like to believe that it is, and it's certainly illustrative of what a marker tree should look like, if somebody decided that was a moonscape in 1904, '05, '06, and there were still people traveling to that site. So if you believe the advice that this tree is giving you and walk in the direction at points, you're going to skirt around that black spruce swamp on the way to that stand. So that's another issue. And there's a Nojibwa archaeologist that joined the gathering at that site who could be a resource for you to talk about why the place is called Sugar Camp. Another learning prospect. And then lastly, when they logged that with oxen, you don't, you don't pull those sled loads uphill. You pull them on the flat, or you follow the decline and let gravity help you to follow drainages. So that little site that you have is the beginning of a little watershed. There's a little creek, it's about two feet wide, six inches deep, that flows out of there when there's normal precipitation. There's another one that emerges from the property we own adjoining you. There's another one further to the east, and so on. Those continue to converge and head to Jenny Weber Lake, where those logs were assembled on ice roads to begin log drives down Jenny Weber Creek to the Goodie Gass, to the Moons Lake chain, to the Pelican, to the Wisconsin River, and to Merrill. That's where that wood went to get sawed in 1895. With that, I leave you to discuss what you discussed. Please know that I will work with you as a resource. I won't go tell these stories, but I know the people who can tell them, and I would help you with that when you commit there to that property as a resource for kids. Again, it's something you need, you have a mission to help forestry develop folks who can participate in decision-making for public land forestry. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, John. All right, that will conclude our public comments section. And next we go to administrator's report update on Act 20.
Yes, I just thought it would be a good time for us to take a few minutes of professional development for the board to get up to speed a little bit with what we've been dealing with with Act 20, and I thought I won't go real deep into it. I put some documents in for you to read up on the historical. It came into being legislatively last summer, and the timelines, although it may have seemed like it was reasonable, they're very fast for turning around in public education. And the timelines that were deemed were when a screener would be determined, what curriculum would be approved, et cetera. So I just wanted to let you know, hot off the presses where we are right now, it's still up for discussion. There's a revision to the bill to ask for an additional time period. The law states that we'll start doing the screening in the beginning of the school year September. However, that screener is not going to be selected and the vendor and the purchasing being made until July 1st. Well, think of the school calendar, from July 1st to September 1st is a very short window to train staff and administration on that. So that's why they're looking at making that revision. The good news that I want to bring back to you is, just so you know, I've tried to keep you up to speed all along, that Three Lakes has been very committed, especially the past three years, at our elementary levels, getting prepared for this, working through the science of reading, having a commitment to the very best practices. Our staff did the letters training through some of our ESER money right along before they said, this is what you should do. We knew that, we researched that, we knew that was the proper way to go. The other thing that we did was when we had the ability to do some more work and training, we did what was called Keys to Literacy, helping our special education teachers really realize how that works into the plan and the top 10 tools. Well, if you do any reading, and I know Mike, you do a lot of reading on this literacy piece, you've seen those names because we were very proactive and we did select the criteria based on what we knew we needed to do. That's not saying what we were doing was bad in any way, but it was saying that we knew where we had to put our attention. So a lot of very good things have happened and are in place, and I'm extremely proud of the Steve, Todd, the administrators, and the teachers, which is really, this is a very heavy focus at the elementary level, especially at the early literacy grade levels. So that is in place. What is frustrating now maybe is waiting for the list of approved curriculum. We've got two lists going on. We've got one that was determined by this early literacy council, and we've got one that DPI now has inserted and said what it's going to be. They may merge and be the same lists. We'll have to wait and see. We don't know what the vendors are, and we don't know what the intervention pieces are going to be yet, but we have a pretty good idea. What we are currently doing show up on these lists, so we feel good about that. However, it's still a lot of moving pieces. And I feel like, you know, I don't like to use those old cliches, but it does sort of feel like they're building the plane while you're on it. And that's a lot more on educators and administrators as they're trying to provide the best instruction. So I just wanted to give you some information on that and let you know that I will keep you up to speed. The one key piece, and I put a note in your board docs for you to refer to, is part of the legislation, the law, is that all of the administrators, the principals who are supervising these teachers and the practices have to be trained by July 1, 2025. And again, that's a pretty big and quick turnaround. We are going to do the work through CISA. It's good programming, don't get me wrong, but again, it's many additional days that we've got to account for and get into place. So I wanted you to know what was going on with that and just give you a chance to ask me questions. I'm by no means an expert in it, but I probably know a little more about it than many people because we've been kind of living it right along. Any questions or concerns?
Is this a Wisconsin-only thing, or is there a federal level of this that this is kind of coming down through or overlapping with?
It is, it, that's, it's kind of a three-part question. It is state, many states. It is tied really very truly to some of your federal funding is what really drives why we do what we do. And it's looking at the gaps that were seen in Wisconsin, and a lot of states looked at the Mississippi model where they saw a lot of growth rather quickly. And that kind of spurred it, that brings back the debate about should there be the phonics and the phonemic awareness, you know, because there's always that shift going on, and there is an awareness now that that has to be a component of what has, has to be done. It got as specific as saying banning 3Q practices, which is a reading practice, which, I'll tell you, we were very heavily immersed in it about 12, 14 years ago in my former district, and we thought we were doing it for the right reasons and such, but in time, it's shown that there are some gaps that were not addressed. What we did in the former district is we had identified that, which any good educational program will identify, and we had supplemented that with additional phonics programming, but that's not necessarily the case. So it's trying to get the kids so they are all at that solid reading level by that third grade level. We know that that's when it really needs to happen. So we continue on that journey.
So based on the DPI update, the readiness screener position that has to come in and train all the schools is going to be under control, but they still haven't hired, this office doesn't exist yet.
Yes.
So the, once someone is hired, they think they're going to turn around and get the entire state trained and...
Well, the fact is, they will get someone in person, but they won't be training it. They will be demoning it onto us, and we will have that training. So when you think about it, if it's July 1st, and our staff is already coming back in August, and our kids are here September 1 or thereabouts, and you have that window to get the training in, that, that's a really heavy lift to try to get everything in place, not just Three Lakes District, but statewide. And, you know, I, personal opinion, you want to do it right, you want to do it well, you know? It's going to be on the floor tomorrow for discussion. I don't know which way it'll go. So we will see where things end.
Hopefully they don't force it. Hopefully they are willing to extend the timetable to do it well, like you said.
I mean, as you stated, there is definitely a lot of moving parts to this. Some of the new things that are in it too are just the reporting, the accountability that they're asking for the students or from the schools. And, you know, never a bad thing, but again, another layer.
Yep.
Another piece of the puzzle. And fortunately, you and your team have worked on this ahead, and, because there are a lot of things that aren't even, they're not ready to go yet. And fortunately, you have taken the initiative early on to embrace this. When I was at the convention two years ago, and there's been a group down there advancing the science of reading, and I spent quite a bit of time talking with them, and, you know, they asked, you know, what are some of the things that we've done and implemented? And they were very pleased with what the Three Lakes School District has already put into place. And so I'm happy that we are where we are. I guess I'm a little concerned about how much extra things are going to be laid on, administration, our teachers, et cetera, just on the reporting and such. I mean, some of the testing that's going to be required, you know, for our students and such, there's a lot.
There's a lot, and there's the parent reporting component, which is what we would do anyways, but then there's very strict timelines for developing a personalized plan, which, yes, there should be, but when you have these, these days determined and this time to get it done, and by the way, we're still trying to teach the kids school, the other pieces, it does make, like I said, a very heavy lift.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Is this a bigger push to try and pull up the districts that might be behind and then just, I mean, because if you're a good district that's in tune with what's going on, aren't you doing all this stuff anyways?
Yeah. You know, I would like to think that that would be recognized, but the accountability piece, I think, is where it gets more murky. Like I would, I would defend what we're doing. I would be pleased to defend what we're doing and how we're doing it, and how the teachers have worked, you know, with their training and stuff. You would think that maybe it is to pull everybody up, but it's kind of that, well, this is going to be one size fits all legislatively. When you, when you get to that piece, yes. I would have thought that there would have been some flexibility in the beginning because back in August and September, the conversation was, don't throw away what you're doing. If you're doing a solid curriculum, if you're doing a good program, we're not going to tell you what that is. But yet, here are two lists of determining what are approved curriculums and not. So it does feel like it's, you know, got more teeth to it than just do a good job and we'll support you.
It's still, and it's early to tell, but any thoughts on, is there going to be someone in administration that's just going to be focused on this piece? I mean, it's just...
I'll tell you what.
It's a, it's a big deal.
Well, and you bring up a good point. This piece, and what about mathematics?
It's just...
And what about mental health of our children?
Yeah.
And what about developing social skills, coping skills? This is one piece.
Funding.
What's that?
What about increases in funding to do all this government mandated stuff?
Right.
Talk about maybe providing half the funding.
Maybe.
Yes, that's...
So, so yes, I'm not saying it's a bad thing. In fact, it's, you know, we are already, we're committed to it, but it does provide a lot to think about and manage.
All right, well, thanks to you and your team.
An update on that.
Yeah. All right, and thank you for that update.
You were welcome.
Good information.
Yes.
All right, next we go to new business. March meeting date dates, anything new there, Terry?
I would like you to make a decision this evening. We had talked about doing a special meeting or potentially starting earlier so we can have a dedicated time to reviewing the NEXUS report update. You have asked me to go back and work with the building administrators and prioritize the needs, and then look at the budget with Caleb, and bring you back some more information. So we will do some more talking about that specifically as to what is really the most highest priority of needs and such. And it's not ready. I'll tell you that right now.
So the idea is if we started at 5:00 on our regular meeting date, hopefully giving us an hour, we should be able to get through it.
Then roll into it.
And then our regular board meeting would follow, and at least that way we're being efficient, I guess, with everyone's time and, but set enough time aside to look specifically at that component.
Terry, is that enough time for you and your administration?
Yes, because...
Yes, because we're not going to be getting into the, the real deep nitty-gritty yet. This is, again, just bringing you more information as to what really is prioritized by, you know, like when the principals talk to you about what's their one, two, and three, and then some more specific costs to that. The work really comes in then when we're working with NEXUS and more of the budgeting approach, but we wanted to separate out what that maintenance, deferred maintenance was from actual projects.
Right.
So I think an hour is an adequate amount of time. I think we can spin our wheels and talk about a lot of what-ifs, but this is more of a, this is where we're at right now, and then help you form some questions in your mind as to, okay, this is where we're at. What are some potential thoughts that might, we might have if we are looking at some bigger projects in the future? What might some of those survey questions be that we would want to ask our community, their thoughts on it? And, you know, start to shape that discussion, if we even go to that part, but we need to know where we're at with our current funding and then the long range, again, the one-year, three-year, five-year, 10-year and beyond.
Okay. All right, so we would be looking for a motion to start our regular board meeting early at 5:00 on March the 20th.
I'll make the motion to have the regular board meeting begin at 5:00 p.m. on March 20th.
All right, so motion by Josh, second by Stacy. Any further questions? Does that work with everyone's schedule?
I will have to be virtual that night just after I, I have annual training.
Okay. All right, so we do have a motion on the table. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Very good. All right, so we'll start that meeting at 5:00 and that'll be one of the first things we tackle, right?
Yep, it will be.
All right, next we go to B, second Friday pupil membership count.
Okay, and you saw that when we did the second count that in January, we went from 504 in September to 500 in January, but I just want to share with you a couple of thoughts. It's not like something bad happened or people are leaving the district. There's a lot of, again, moving parts. People move. People come, people go. And Caleb could not be here this evening, but I asked him to share a couple of thoughts with you all that he and I had discussed, so I'm just going to make a couple of points and then we can go from there. Although we lost four members, which might seem as a disappointment, it's not as simple as just looking at the numbers. Overall, we had five members come in while nine left. In Three Lakes Elementary, there was four out and one came in. One student in the area literally left the weekend after the count was submitted in September. Another one was open enrolled to Northland Pines who moved out into their district, and then we had two students leave the district while one came in. So that's the difference in the numbers there. In Sugar Camp, we had two come in and two go out. We lost one family with two students and we gained one family with two students. At the junior, senior high, we had three come in and two go out. Two students who were open enrolled out to other districts ended up moving out of the district. Another one was for reasons that you know, an expulsion, so that's counted a little bit differently. And then we had two new students enroll. And then probably the highlight I want to share with you is open enrollment went from 79 to 76. Three of the open enrolled students were in one, were one family who were living in the Crandon area, but they actually left the complete area. They, they, I don't know if they're out of state, but darn near if they're not. So they, they left the area. And then we went from open enrollment out from 68 to 66. Three open enrollment out. Students moved from the district, as mentioned, but one student enrolled and opted to open enroll out in November. So overall, we still have a net gain of 10 students, which is in the positive, and we like to see that, knowing that there are pieces all the time that change. And something that you need to know, that I guess I never have really talked to you about, is we do have requests for enrollment that come in. And our open enrollment, as you know, is capped with special education or programming that we can or cannot offer. We also are sometimes asked for consideration of open enrollment where there has been an expulsion or a behavior situation, or sometimes we're asked by social services through a county program, et cetera. Those are considered and they're really evaluated very deeply individually. I meet with the principals, we talk with Kerry Volk, we also follow up with the parents, and we have to look at what's best for the district. So what might sometimes feel like I'm turning away money is for the best interest of, in my opinion, the district. We cannot be all things to everybody, especially if they had difficulties somewhere else, and we know that we don't have the capacity to meet those needs. If we can, we try, but I just wanted to touch base on that as well for you.
All right. Very good. Thank you for that report.
You bet.
Any questions and further questions? We'll go back to the agenda. For C, consider approval of personnel report of new hires and resignations.
All right, we have two retirements to report. Robin Lemoine, fourth-grade treat teacher, Sugar Camp at the end of the school year, and Al Vodas, high school science and tech ed teacher at the end of the school year. We have some hirings. Kim Terlisi, an additional assistant cook, part-time. Brad Biznet, baseball head coach. Michelle Brown, golf head coach. David Ditzler, golf assistant coach. Todd Ria, junior high golf coach. Cole Grisbach is now the girls' soccer head coach. Kelly Grisbach is the girls' soccer assistant coach. Jerry Adamovich, softball head coach. Dan Shepley, softball assistant coach. Nate Coach, junior high track head coach. Katie Ford, assistant track coach. Jessica Weaver's assistant track coach. And Justin Zeus, head football coach. Phil has been a busy man.
All right, very good. I'll take a motion to accept approval of the personnel report.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Alicia, second by Michelle. Any further questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And, yeah, we've got two teachers that have been with us for a long time and definitely going to miss having them here. Yeah, I've known them for a long time and it's, it's always, you know, mixed emotions. You're happy for them and sad for the district at the same time, but, yeah, I guess they will be missed. And thanks to all the stuff forward and me and Coach that's providing our students with just a great experience, a knowledgeable resource and, and training and all these different avenues, so... Next, we go to consider approval of the new high schools course offerings for 2024 through 2025.
And we will turn it over to Justin and some of his teaching team that he has here this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Yes, we're here seeking approval for five, well, there are five courses you see listed on the agenda. It's, it's a happy thing and something we should celebrate that we have three teachers and they're all here tonight, who we have gone through the process with Nicolay to become certified to offer these courses to our students. Of the five that you see on the list, we're going to ask for inclusion of four of those into the course description, that's the course description book that's in the midst of being finished right now so we can get the scheduling process going for next year. Those courses that we would look to have put into this year's course description book, one in the business department, Mr. Busco, Intro to Marketing, one in the math department with Mrs. Dobbins, and that would be the college mathematics. Also, she was certified and approved by Nicolay to teach mathematical reasoning. That one we're not asking to include at this time. It just, in the discussion with the math department, doesn't quite fit as a need in our spoken sequence right now, but I wanted you to know that she is qualified to teach it. That's a good thing. And then Mr. Volkman has been approved by Nicolay to teach two, and this is the beauty of having folks with multiple licensures. We've got a tech ed teacher who also is licensed in teaching math and computer science, so that's a really good thing for districts like ours. But Mr. Volkman has been approved by Nicolay to teach math skills and geometry skills. Those are both courses necessary for kids seeking, let's say, a welding certification from Nicolay, so all that can be done in-house here. So that's just a brief intro of what those courses' names are. Obviously, we have professionals right here in front of you. If you have specific questions of any of them, they have, like I said, been certified, credentialed, approved by Nicolay to prove, to, to teach these courses to our kids in-house, which is obviously a benefit. We have, we have Start College Now, but some of those are, you know, virtual online. Our kids have to travel to Nicolay. These are all right here in-house with our people, so that's two thumbs up for these transcripted credit options. Mr. Bach has reviewed them, likes what they bring to the table, and obviously, I wouldn't have them here in front of you if I didn't approve them as well administratively. So with that, I'll stop talking. And Mr. Busco, you're first up on the alphabetical, so if you want to give a little spin on your, your request for addition, go ahead.
Yeah, feels like I was just here. Great to see you guys again. Thank you for giving us some time tonight to talk about these classes. The introduction to marketing course came about from student interest. So last year I was here, we added the sports entertainment marketing course. Currently, there's 17 students enrolled in that running this spring and it's off and running. We just finished our big Super Bowl unit. The real reason I like this introduction to marketing course is it gives students, as Mr. Zeus said, a sequence in the marketing world. So a sequence is two or more courses. It also allows a student, if they really like this class and it's offered in the fall, they can then transition easily into an additional marketing course in the spring. It is a transcripted option. There's two credits on the table if students score above an 80% over the course of the semester in the class. The course is offered currently at Pines, Tomahawk, and Lakeland in Reindlander. Three of those four places offer it transcripted as well, and talking to the teachers over there, the class does very well, and students have a high success rate of getting the two credits through Nicolay. The other really awesome component, looking through the textbook, that if we would be approved to teach it through Nicolay, there is a really great chapter on marketing around travel and tourism, which, as we know, for this area of the state is our bread and butter winter and summer. So I think that would give our kids a really great exposure to what happens in our Chamber of Commerce, as well as with a lot of our local business owners in the summer months, but also in the winter. So that's the class we're looking to add. It strictly comes from student interest and I wouldn't be here otherwise. Any questions you guys have about the class?
I'd like to sign up.
It's a good time. First hour, starting. Sports, entertainment, and marketing joins.
Awesome. Yeah. Yeah. Something every business can use, right? So... Any other questions? All right. Thank you for that.
Mrs. Dobbins, you want to give a little synopsis of college math?
Sure. So the college mathematics course will review and build on geometry and algebra concepts. So we're looking for that first placement either after Algebra I and Geometry for students as a way to work on their skills and get ready for Algebra II as a senior then, or we have the Algebra 1A, Algebra 1B geometry sequence, and so then seniors could take college mathematics as a fourth math course. So we are kind of looking at the college math course as a filler, seeing a need for students that maybe need a little more time to build their skills and get ready for Algebra II. Do you guys have any questions on that?
And just doubling back a little bit, the mathematical reasoning, is that part of what we're approving here tonight?
Mathematical reasoning is, is a notification to, to the board that Gretchen is certified, approved by Nicolay to teach that course. We are not asking to offer that at this time because it doesn't fit as well into our spoken sequence.
Okay.
In other words, we don't see a student who needs for it right now.
Okay. All right. So I just want to make sure I'm, 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 are we, are you asking for approval on that one or not?
No.
Okay. All right, so that one is out. Okay. Okay, so it's basically the college mathematics that you're going to be looking at teaching Gretchen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Got it. Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Mr. Volkman, math skills and geometry skills.
So this is the third year now that we've been working with Nicolay for our welding program. The last two years, we've had students walk in graduation at the Dome in Reindlander in their graduation ceremony. It's been really amazing. With the addition of these two math courses, we now can have our students not just get their certificate to walk for, they can actually get their Nicolay diploma for welding before they get their diploma for Three Lakes High School. So they'll be college graduates before their high school graduates, basically, we're looking at. I believe, Ryan, you can correct me on that. I believe that's, those are the last two pieces that we didn't have to have their entire curriculum for their entire diploma program. So better than certifications, it's college degree.
Yeah. And all right here.
Yep.
That's great. Any questions? All right, thank you. Yeah. I will say math was always my favorite subject, so good stuff.
Just a general comment. Thank you to all of you for taking the time, dedication to advance and grow and put yourself into the shoes of the students to give them these opportunities for the best, to give them the best opportunity that they have for this district. Thank you, guys.
It should be noted, too, a beautiful part of this for us locally, sometimes the principal, we're sitting in front of you asking for four new courses to be added. I'd be saying, well, it's going to, we're going to need more FDE to pull it off, we're going to need extra staffing. That's not the case at all with this. We will need extra staffing to offer these courses to our kids as early as next year.
Definitely looks like you're following student interest, so, yeah.
So one quick question. So the, the geometry skills that we have in here that you're looking to add, is that, can that be a replacement for the geometry class that we currently offer?
I don't believe so. It's, it's more focused on like the geometry skills you would need in the trades work environment.
Okay.
So it's a lot more practical. There's less, less of the theory, less of the proof, that kind of thing. It's more area formulas and things like that.
Sure, yeah, okay.
More applied geometry.
Yep. Yep, sounds good.
All right, any other questions?
The action on the recommendation just has to take out the mathematical reasoning in the recommended action.
So as far as student credits in, let's just say, math, college, excuse me, graduation requirements, is any of these three new math courses going to be eligible for qualification for a math requirement?
I'll turn that over to the math teachers.
These wouldn't be a replacement for the, Ryan, would you echo that?
We require three math credits, but we don't specifically have in order what
Those three are.
Those three are.
Yeah.
And so we have historically given students .25 high school credits for every one college credit. We're looking at dual credits. So...
So in the past, we haven't specified it has to be Algebra II.
Correct.
It could be one of these courses. If we, if we keep doing what we do in the past, yeah.
Okay.
But then you're saying not for the math, not for the trade-specific math, because those, based on your calculation, would be .25 credit.
Right.
So we're looking at... So we're looking at the college mathematics course would be for their high school diplomas requirement, but not the other.
Okay. All right.
It would be only point seven-five, so it's not even filling.
But they still have their normal course, right? They're...
Oh, yeah.
Laborable, right?
Right.
It gives the juniors and seniors an option who want to be in a wide trades...
Take another one.
To not have to do those things once they get to Nicolay. Right. So looking at it as like an elective.
Correct. Right. We're assuming correctly, it would be counted as elective?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Okay. Others? Questions? All right. So we're looking to seek approval of the Intro to Marketing, the College Mathematics, Math Skills Description, and the Geometry Skills Description courses. Four of those, correct? Okay.
It's just math skills and geometry skills. Is that a new course, right? The description was a different piece?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the new courses as presented, including Intro to Marketing, College Mathematics, Math Skills, and Geometry Skills.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Stacy, seconded by Alicia. Any other questions? Hearing none, I will call S to a vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes by zero. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Next, we go to E. Consider participation in the statewide slash Onyda Vilas Student Substance Abuse Prevention Alliance Grant.
And we have Ryan Bach here. And I was going to say Mariah Phelps, but it's Mariah Grohl. You're still that little kid to me.
Only nine years.
Right. That's all. To go through the program, and she has provided also a handout for you, and I really appreciate that, Mo, because I'm really wanting to get the language down and calling it the Drug-Free Community Support Program, that we can start, you know, talking about and what it offers. The reason we wanted to bring it to you, and I will let them get into it, is because it is an opportunity to look at providing help, education, and resources for our students in these two areas of alcohol abuse and nicotine abuse. And as we all know, it affects all communities, small and large. And I did go ahead and typed up the notes that, or the questions, so you have a good feel for what they would look like, because I think you would be interested in that. And with that, Ryan and Mo, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Great. Perfect. So thank you for the opportunity to share some information in regards to the Drug-Free Community Program. Mrs. Billis and I have been, we've been having conversations back and forth. We know that the purpose and the goal is to prevent substance use, you know, within our student body, in our community. And I know the Oland County Health Department has reached out to ask if we could conduct a survey of our student body to gain some more information in regards to the grant. So, Ryan, at this time, if you'd like to talk a little bit more about the assessment and what you're doing in other schools in Oland County as well?
Yes. Thank you so much for having me. Great to be here tonight. I have a special place in my heart for Three Lakes, obviously, so it's always nice to be able to come back and see if we can work together to, and improve like the lives of our youth. So the Drug-Free Community Support Program, it's a mouthful, so you'll hear me call it the DFC. It's a nationwide effort to reduce use, youth substance use, which, and that is also a tongue twister. So there's a, it's all across the country, there's about like seven hundred coalitions consisting of like twelve different community sectors. That's one of the requirements, is having partnerships with so many different parts of the community, because really, it like, it affects everyone, as you said, and with, with our youth, like, they're so involved in every bit of our community, just as much as we're involved in their lives. So I have that list on there of like the different community partnerships that we look at. So the goal is, just the goal would be to like establish and strengthen collaboration among the communities, like, all, like, all over. And then ultimately reduce substance use among, use among youth by focusing on, being like up to, or like, sorry, by focusing on two substances that the community would choose. So something like nicotine, as was mentioned, and then other things, other things that people focus on, two or other coalitions, they focus on like alcohol or THC. So the, we've had one strategic planning meeting so far with the different community groups who have expressed interest, and they've identified so far three that they're interested in, THC, nicotine, and alcohol. And really, like, what we're looking at doing now, as we're collecting data, we, it's hard to make decisions for youth without their involvement. Like, they really need to be a part of the conversation, which is why they're, they're listed as like one of the required community partnerships that we need to have. But also why I'm coming to you today is for, to request, they, well, we're calling it focus groups, it's more of like a guided survey, to get input from the students directly about what's going on in their lives, like in their school. Most of the questions aren't necessarily open-ended. We do have some, but a lot of it is just gathering numbers related to, like, how, how many of you think that kids are getting vaping products from retail stores? And so like via a raise of hands. We just completed the focus groups in Rhineland at James Williams and the high school, so those went really well. We had a really good participation. As part of the privacy involved, I'm not going to share specifics just about what happened, but that is like one of the caveats like for having these focus groups. I know one of the concerns can be, it's a sensitive topic. We don't want, we want to make sure parents are, like, know what we're asking their students. So we're looking at having those permissions left signed and really just going through, offering that support to the students and still getting that information that we need. I totally went in the full circle there. Sorry about that. And the, with those focus groups, we're looking at sixth through eighth grade and then ninth through twelfth, because the DFC grant focuses on ages twelve to eighteen. So we know that the experiences of the sixth graders are very different from that of the eleventh and twelfth graders. And recognizing that Three Lakes is, it, we don't have the same data on Three Lakes as we do on the other schools as well, so we know, speaking with Ryan, talking about how things are like different here, wanting to learn more about, more about that, what's working, what's not. And really just, like, I mean, having that collaboration would be so beneficial, because with, with this grant too, I know the agenda said Onyda Vilas, but it's actually just Onyda County that we're focusing on. So having all three school districts, like their involvement and their support, and to help implement strategies to reduce that youth, youth substance use would be incredible. I, yeah. I think, I think I covered, covered everything. Questions at all?
So focus groups, these are in-person?
Correct.
Gathering?
Yep. In-person. Parents could sign permissions ahead of time, just indicating that they're okay to be involved. In Rhineland, it took about thirty-five minutes to complete all thirty-five questions, actually. And it was just some really good information from them. And just the level of knowledge that they have is like invaluable to us.
They know more than we do.
Yeah, they do.
A lot.
I learned so many new things.
What was that?
They know a lot more than we do.
Do you let parents sit in on it or not participate?
No. What we have, what we've been doing is having, we recommend having the students, like, either with us, another option, though it is not as recommended, would be have like a staff, like a school staff member sit in, or facilitate, sorry, to have a staff member facilitate. What Rhineland did, for example, my coworker and I facilitated, and we had a staff member sit in to listen to the questions and provide that support if students felt like they needed to step away.
So as far as participation, how is that determined?
Really, it's just with the school, like identifying students that might be interested in, like, in providing that information. I, with Rhineland, it was the local, one of the local, like, school groups came in, or so had some volunteers, and others just kind of heard about it and wanted to join. They were also, the benefit of joining or participating was that they got Culver's gift cards as well. So it was like a little, like, extra plug where it's like, hey, like, if you participate, it's, your time is valuable to us too, so wanting to give something back.
Part of the data collection was identifying where the problem set is amongst our youth. If we have no data coming out of Three Lakes, but we do out of Lakeland Union and Rhineland School District, when the grant funding comes to the community and they look at where the problem areas is, the priority is always going to go to Rhineland or in Managua, because we don't have data. So if you, in void of data, it looks like there is no problem. Even if it's at a smaller scale, the problem is here. So these groups have, I kind of understand the concept of protecting our kids from having some questions regarding substance abuse in our school, but it gives them an invaluable tool on their data and how they actually put the grant together, because the health department will be then putting the grant to get funding in the community to help combat, at the community level, how do we combat the substance abuse problems?
So does the process start with a communication that goes to all parents?
Yes.
And then there's parental permission slips where students and parents can opt out if they choose not to?
Correct. Yep. And then it'd be scheduling with the staff, staff as to what date and time works best, whether that be over the lunch hour, or if there's like a specific break time. It is, there is some flexibility there too. But we don't want to have this, we don't want to do this without the parental consent either.
So you said it roughly takes thirty-five minutes or something like that?
Yeah. Most of the questions, like I said, are like, gather in like numerical data, so that really goes fast with just the hand raises. Yeah. So usually thirty-five minutes.
So is it, is it discussion, or is it, you just get this, this sheet of paper and you fill out the, the answers?
We ask the questions in real time and count how many hand raises there are for the first twenty-seven-ish questions. And then the last few are open-ended, just to get more information about their input, because, well, we want, we need quantitative data for the grant. It's so important to have that qualitative, qualitative data to, to know, like, what is really going on, and like, giving them the chance to speak freely.
Just browsing through the questions and such, for the most part, I was comfortable with them. You know, sometimes in multiple choice, if you're a student that doesn't partake in some of these behaviors, you can, it could almost be looked at as being suggestive.
Like, yeah, kind of like their perception, where it's like, for example, like, kids who don't vape, like, where do, where are kids getting vapes? Where do you, like, where do they think they're getting vapes? Like, their perception of what's happening.
Yeah. And I, from what I saw, I thought the questions were, were good, and I really liked the open-ended questions at the end. To me, that provides the best information. Because then you're getting it from the students in their own words.
Yes.
So. When would this take place?
So the, the application for the grant itself is due April seventeenth. So we do want to give our evaluation team time to analyze all the data as well. So we'd be asking in the, within the first, like, three weeks of March, if possible, to have those done.
Okay. So information is sent out, the parents, they can choose to opt in or opt out. It's totally up to each individual family? Do they get to see the questions or anything like that ahead, or?
We haven't. I mean, not opposed to that either. If, if that's something they would request.
Within our daily schedule, we have that win time at the end of the day, that's thirty minutes.
Okay.
So with that timeframe, it would be...
Yeah, that would...
Appropriate.
Yeah.
It would be a structural time then, if we chose to do that.
Okay. Could we, could we choose to just do seventh and eighth rather than sixth through eighth?
That, that is up to you. The reason why we wanted to do six was because with the other school district, six is counted as a middle school, so Three Lakes is that unique, like, air, like, unique school where sixth grade is still in elementary. Just knowing that vaping is starting to occur younger and younger as well, like, that's part of the reason why we would want sixth graders. We don't want to miss that input. However, if you're more comfortable with seventh and eighth grade, well, we're not going to say no.
Yeah. And, you know, I understand where, like you say, a middle school starts where the sixth grader's already in with the seventh and eighth graders.
Yes.
It's a little different. Where here, it's, and I'm not saying it's not a problem, or, or might not be a problem, or kids might not be already getting introduced, but, you know, there's a little...
It's a, it's a little different.
It's a little different.
I would like to see if Sugar Camp Elementary is, if any of those kids are exposed to vaping in THC. I, I think that's the big thing for me, is I don't think we're pushing them to do it. I think it's good to know than not know, understanding it's an elementary school, but these kids have a lot of access at home.
Any thoughts, Terry?
I think we need to have some, what I call baseline data. Unless we have the voice of the, the students, then we're kind of, you know, shooting in the dark here. It supports our other efforts with our mental health awareness, trying to support kids at all levels. Some kids, you're right, will not have exposure to any of this. Others will probably share that they have been exposed, and it'll maybe be real surprising where they are getting the products, probably areas you wouldn't be, you know, surprised, you would be surprised. I would think if we communicate it very clearly as to why, especially at the sixth grade level, why there is the ask, the parent still ultimately has the decision to make. And even getting some data would probably be beneficial and helping with your planning.
Yeah. Okay.
And I would be willing to take on all the responsibility in terms of coordinating and organizing from the school perspective, working with, we choose to do sixth grade, working with the elementary principals, junior high principal, Mr. Zeus as well. So, you know, this would be a coordinated effort, but I'd be willing to leave, if it would have the capacity I need to.
And I think if you could make the list of questions available for parents that would be interested, so they know ahead, I guess.
Can I offer a thought on that?
Sure.
So the parents who may have children that have problems at home might not be able to identify those openly, because then there would be a refusal.
There would be a what?
I'd be concerned there'd be a refusal. Right? Are we taking away a portion of the student body by providing, I think if you, if you provide the data that they have as far as the grant is concerned, and allow the parent the opportunity to say all of these things, this is what we're going to talk about, if you give them the questions, I would be concerned about parents making the decision to not allow it, and losing some data.
Yeah. I, I still believe that the parents are the first teacher, and they should have the right to know. I think that's important.
When they're actually fulfilling their role. I agree.
Yeah.
Do you think there's the other side where you might get more involvement if the parents could see that it's nothing that's invasive as far as questioning?
Parents are either going to allow it or not allow it, regardless of the, the questions, in my opinion. If parents are willing to allow their child to participate in a survey regarding youth substance abuse, I don't, I don't think it matters the questions that they're asking.
Yeah. I, I really believe they have the right to know.
I would be concerned if they knew the questions, they would...
Teach them what to say to respond to the questions, then you're not going to get honest answers.
That's why I don't think parents can be involved at present either. It allows them the opportunity to speak openly about the problem.
Correct, exactly.
Professionals who deal with it.
Could you summarize and maybe pick a few questions so that the parents kind of have an idea of what's going to be asked, but not every question? I don't know.
What I was going to say.
Compromise a little?
I was going to say if a parent maybe wanted to see them but not take them home to recite, maybe meet with Mr. Bach and just say, you know, hey, could we go through this list and then not let them take it?
Available upon request.
Yes, questions available upon request.
I, I think that needs to be available if a parent wants to see them.
Right, but not just send them home automatically.
I'm fine with that.
Sure.
Yeah.
And I will double check too with our evaluation team just because they're, the epidemiologists, like they know much more about the data piece than I do. I, like, I personally would be okay with this, like having like the parent, like questions that are available upon request. I just want to make sure that my evaluation team is aware as well.
Good questions, others?
Is there a minimum and a maximum that you can have in each group or is it, you want the five to ten?
Ideally, it's five to ten. Yeah, because we found that gives us the most information without it being overwhelming either. But then, it was nice to see that not everybody was going in the group either where it's like it's one kid thought one thing, didn't mean that they all were like, oh yeah, definitely.
So if we get twelve in a group, how are we going to decide what ten go? Are you going to do it randomly out of a hat? Are you?
Good. Unless you feel like, like if you get permission, one thing that was brought up was like if, if there's a student who has the parent's permission but is like unknown to like not participate per se, perhaps like lean towards another student instead, because we do ultimately want that participation.
So it's five to ten students per group?
Per group, correct.
Is it just one group?
It'd be two groups, one for the middle school and then one for the high school.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Anyone prepare to make a motion?
I will make a motion to allow the Ometa County Health Department to work in concert with the Three Lakes School District, including Mr. Bach, to involve students in a focus group for, focus group survey.
Second.
Okay. Does that motion allow the parents, should they request to see the questions, that they have the right to do that?
Maria, do by chance have your actual, the sheet that goes out to the parents? Do you have that with you?
No, I do not. But I, I know I said, like I sent you the permission slip.
Yep, I do have it.
Okay.
I think once you read the permission slip and what it entails and the details, it might make you feel better about your questions to the parents. Because it looks, it, it explains what it is and why and the process.
Okay, so.
But I'm, I'm also accepting if, but I, I think she needs an answer first from the data collectors if that hasn't, if that's allowed.
Yeah, if that would influence too much.
She, you need to ask to see if the parents are able to see or ask?
At least to see, to see if the, like if the parents, if it's conducive to the, to our data, like collecting process to have the parents look at the questions ahead of time. Because if it's going to skew the data.
Yeah, they could, they could be afraid that the survey data would be tainted.
It's like an experiment. There's rule, like, we don't have that, we're missing information.
So we don't know if you're?
At the top, yeah, unfortunately with, I'm not the expert in the data piece. I, like I said, I personally don't see a problem with it, but I just want to make a double check since I am part, just part of a team, I don't want to speak on behalf of like their knowledge and their expertise.
Okay.
But I, like making a note to follow up with them as well. Tomorrow, they are very responsive, so I usually hear back same day.
Okay, so your motion, just so I'm understanding it, how are you setting your motion to not have, to not allow parents to ask for the questions?
No, I think the motion is just whether we allow students to participate in the survey. Like, so that question doesn't hinge upon my motion.
And then the communication with the parents with the permission slip would have the additional information to talk to Mr. Bach. And we're not trying to get every student, we're, we're trying to do focus groups. I would suspect that we would have enough students and parents who would support it. You know, if they weren't comfortable with it, I think we would still have enough to get data. If that helps, I don't know.
I guess, you know, in my opinion, you know, Terry, Ryan, you guys kind of know where our questions have been coming from and leading. Can we leave, leave that part after getting a response in regards to whether it can or cannot happen? Can we leave that last piece up to administration?
I'm fine with that, I guess.
I'm comfortable with that.
And, and again, the, the parents still have the right to opt out.
Right. Yeah, in the end, that is their opportunity.
Okay.
Do you want me to restate the motion?
What's that?
Should I restate the motion?
I'm, I'm good. Anyone else?
Want me to read it back?
I'm good with that understanding.
I don't think it worked in. Okay.
All right. Okay, so the motion was by Alicia and second by Michelle.
Yes.
All right. Okay. All those in favor, the motion signified by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes by zero.
Now you can thank us.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, next we go to the WASB slash School Perceptions Annual Board Development Tool and Board Governance Workshop.
The reason we have this on, on the agenda tonight is Mike and I had a discussion and originally the thought was, you know, should this happen before he leaves? Whereas I think that the discussion that I would like you all to have is, is that going to be as beneficial? Or are we probably looking at waiting for the new board member to come in and then establish, again, I hate saying baseline all the time, but where we are at, some of you have had a little bit of time behind you. We haven't developed this in the last couple of years to have somebody come in from WASB. Guy Levitt did a few years ago. What they do is they take our responses and they talk us through, maybe some of you are part of that, and help us understand where as a board you are very cohesive and then maybe as a board where you are more outlined. And then that helps us develop some professional development, whether it's specific by them or those online learning modules that really help us become a better functioning school board unit. So that's my piece of it. Mike, I'll let you jump in there and make a decision.
Sure. So the members that were here, who was here? Stacy, I think you were here, weren't you? Yeah, no, Josh.
Must have been when you just came on, I think.
So as Terry mentioned, it, it's a tool basically that the board can use, basically determine what areas that they could consider to basically working together as a group. There's, there's several different areas that it focuses on. It's a survey that's given to each individual board member. You are not identified. You're only identified basically as a vote, I guess. So, so, you know, if somebody had something that maybe stood way out, it's, you know, that person isn't really going to be known, I guess. It's just that it's basically part of that data that, you know, might be an outlier and all right, we need to talk about this here piece because someone feels, you know, X about, you know, this particular piece of the survey. So I've been through two of them and I guess I'm, I'm offering it out, just the fact that I've been through it and I'm, I'm willing to do it before, you know, April will be the last meeting that I'm here. So that's, that's really the only reason I wanted to bring it up. There are a lot of good reasons to do it after a new board member is put into place and onboarded and, because a lot of boards use that as an onboarding process as well. So there is really pluses and minuses both ways, advantages, disadvantages. I just wanted to get some feel for what your thoughts were. And again, it's not anything that we need to, to vote on, but it's just, what are your feelings on this? And if that's something that we want to do, we would have to. It probably would be done in the April meeting. So the survey would be sent out a month ahead and, and then it's a separate meeting all in itself where we would employ the, the use of someone from the WASAB to help us walk through our input. And, and basically, again, this is something that they do all the time, so they're trained and such. So there's, there's a lot of merits to it and I just wanted to get everyone's feelings on what your thoughts, if, if something you wanted to do now or if something that you wanted to do, just wait until when the new board member sits into that seat and, you know, do it after that.
So are we answering questions on this survey about each other on the board?
It's basically, it has to do with about board governance. And, you know, questions about relating to the community, you know, in terms of communications and stuff like that. So it has to do a lot of, you know, the things, the responsibilities of board member to the school, to the community and such, and it's broken down, I think, into nine, nine areas? If you have them there, if you want to read through them.
Um, data-driven, decision-making, number two, board operations, three, culture, four, planning, five, budgeting, six, district operations, seven, community engagement, eight, policy, and nine, vision. And then it's going to ask you if it's fully achieved, mostly achieved, partially achieved, or not achieved, or started. So I think you would naturally think about yourself, but as the board, you know, members sitting there, where you feel their, their strengths and where there's feel, where there's needs. And the process of actually talking it through with the guided facilitation really helps you identify some areas that you might want to make your key focus. Mike, Phil has a question.
I just wondered if I could share, just to help out. Having been a former superintendent, it's a very common practice districts for the board to go through this process. It's a learning tool, it's, you know, like Terry said, it had, giving you an opportunity to come together as a better functioning board, it's, it's very usual in districts, it's not something that's outlandish at all. Normal procedure.
So thoughts?
I guess we're talking about the timing of it.
That's the big question, yeah, yeah.
It would make more sense after the new board member is seated, only because we appreciate your service, but once you're off the board, we no longer need to know where you need to improve. It might allow us an opportunity to sit down with a new board member and make a determination on where we are right now and how do we move forward together.
How lost would a new board member be, be taking these questions, answering these questions?
I think it's okay to be lost.
Okay.
Because it's okay to say.
I was, I first.
Stacy and I, I remember the conversation we talked about.
You were not here very long, I think, when we did that, yeah, yeah.
That, that being said, I would, I would agree with Alicia. No, no offense.
I just wanted to put it out there, just.
I didn't go running, I'm still here.
I feel like you'd, you have been willing to provide us feedback individually, so I think that's a great thing. I think it, I don't think that's going to go away just because you're off the board. You being a resource for that development. Unless that's not true.
I can run, but I can't hide, huh?
Yes.
You can, but it's going to be tougher on here.
Is this supposed to be done annually or every other year or is there a specific timeline you're supposed to?
It's not even required. It's what, I would say annually would be a good practice. I don't know that you have to have the full guided facilitation every year. Some districts are doing it twice a year. I don't think we're a big enough district that would see enough change every six months, but I do think of regular practice and my suggestion would be looking at about that June time because it's kind of like when we're wrapping up a year, it just kind of feels like a natural transition in the year that we'd say, okay, let's really reflect.
You know, and when you, when you consider the average board member is less than three years that they sit on, there are some districts that will implement this tool more often, just to try to keep the board working as a cohesive group. And so I guess for us, we have not done it annually, but if the board so chooses, that's totally their prerogative, so. Okay, all right, well, I appreciate the input. Was there anything else that, Michelle, Stacy? Are you in agreement with that then?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, all right, okay. Well, very good. All right, so next, consider approval of the land use with Jan Alsager for the trap club.
I'll just start this out a little bit and I'll ask Mr. Zeus to help if there's anything. He and I have been actively pursuing this for a few months. Knowing that our Hiles shooting option is completely off the table, that no longer exists, that is gone. So there is not the opportunity to shoot trap there. Our gun is again another further distance and it makes it very difficult to try to fit things in, especially before it gets dark and with other sports and activities that we want to continue to help the students have those multiple experiences. So we've been working with community members. I want to just say right out, you know, for everyone that the Fish and Wildlife Group has been very interested in helping us. They are not driving this specific situation here, but they were like the liaison to connect us with Mr. Alsager. He has property at three and a half miles south on forty-five, am I saying that right? Forty-five, thirty-two, forty-five. And it is actually set up where there is shooting. It's on a game farm type of setting. We have met with them, we have verified our insurance. They, he, he and his father have graciously offered it to the district to use as a short-term solution, at least for this year, potentially the following year. We are doing the agreement right now for one year. Actually, I had brought the document to share with you, but we felt we really should have some formal discussion and approval by the full board. And that's where we're at because it is February twenty-first and the end of the March, March is right around the corner. So we have done our due diligence in the insurance, everything stays the same, everything is covered. Everything is covered. And we've been invited. We don't foresee any, there's not neighbors' houses right there. It's smack dab in the middle of the woods, like 680 acres around it. Mr. Zeus, is there anything else I should add?
You pretty well covered it. The experience last, the tail end of last trap season, traveling with kids to Argon and Ohrcrandin, says that it's definitely in our best interest to, when we have an opportunity like this with gracious neighbors who are offering for us to shoot at a temporary location that's close to here, that's definitely something we are all in favor of.
And the Argon option was like a last-ditch effort.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Thankful that they went to shoot there. That was awesome. It was just travel is, gets me pretty.
Right, yeah. If it wouldn't have been for that, that would have been, that would have been it.
Correct.
Yeah. All right, so we have an option for our students. Any questions or is someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve land use with Mr. Jana Alsager for Trap Club for the 2024 season.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Josh. And second by Stacy. Again, I'll ask if there's any other questions. All right, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. None heard. Motion passes five zero. There we go. We have a better spot, close to our location here and, you know. Good opportunity for our students. And thanks for all the people involved in making that happen.
Yes.
It was, it was a good deal, so. All right. Next, we go to consider revision to the conceptual approval of the Camp Three land use. That being environmental education, trails, and trap range. Terry, you want to start us off?
Sure. It seems like it's the appropriate time for the board to come together and have a discussion about the land use on Camp Three. These are the three original tenets that were included in the conceptual approval. But it seems to be the appropriate time for you to look at what our future is with the land use. Does it fit the vision, the purposes that we have for our students? What we want to do with environmental education, for sure. Does the trails as part of the community piece of it still fit? And what does that mean for actually developing a plan for using that? And does the trap range any longer fit into that perceived future? So I open that up for you to have a conversation and discussion. You also, it's, I had included the final findings in the next update report. But you have had that, a chance to review that and see where we are currently at. It's a separate agenda item, but they do blend together. And I think that's part of what should be shaping your thought process and your discussion when we go forward.
Okay. All right, so we approved this conceptual approval back in August 18, 2021. So a few years ago. And we've gone through a lot since we first proposed this, this land use for the Camp Three property. Based upon interest in the community in each of these three different areas. And we, as a board, thought that was, there was going to be a way of making it work for all three of these uses to happen in that piece of property. As Terry mentioned, we have now since received a ruling from the case that was brought against the, DNR as far as the, trying to remember here my words here. For the wetlands permit. There we go. Thank you, for the general wetland permit. And that was denied. And so we now also have an opportunity, well, we have a new spot for our trap club, and that being south of Three Lakes. So is this the time to remove the trap range from the land use and concentrate on making it work with our current agreement with Mr. Alsager? And try to make that hopefully a long-term fit for our trap club. So the question is basically in front of us, do we revise that conceptual approval?
I was late to this because I wasn't here for the original approval. But has there been any communication with the petitioners on if they would continue the legal side of things if the trap range was off of the conceptual plan for the land?
I don't know if they'd have anything to stand on if it was. I mean, the, outside of the, outside of the denying of the permit, which we could alter the plans, move things over so that it doesn't invade on the wetland area. Not sure that there's anything else beyond that.
I understand from their original affidavit that they put the complaints with regard to lead and all the things relating to firearms. But they also made reference to the clearing, the parking area, we're going to the trails, all that. We still are dealing with a wetland environment. So what's to say that if we pull the trap idea that they don't cause more issue based on any other things that we're doing on the property? That's why I was curious. If along the way, had there been any, any conversation with the petitioners from any end to say, if we take the trap club off the table, do you let us have our forest for educational purposes?
Yeah, I think it's more of a question as far as how much wetlands you are disturbing. That's basically what it boils down to. And so if we can come up with a revised plan where it disturbs less wetland area, try to avoid that as much as all possible. I, you know, the question still is, is would we get the permit for a revised plan? And I would have to assume that you would if you weren't even close to the 10,000 square foot limit. But I guess to answer your question, Alicia, I don't know that we've had any direct communication.
We had direct communication until it went to litigation.
Right.
And then that shut that down. And I would like to say, I think that we have to keep in mind that there's many people who ultimately want to see the same thing. Our students using this for a variety of reasons. The original idea before my time was that potentially this could answer the needs of all. It is a smaller piece of property. It's 40 acres or just shy of that. In the meantime, we have done a lot of learning. We have done a lot of work as far as working through the process as getting the permit. Though the real fact is, we could go ahead and revise, as Josh and Mike were just talking about, the plan and reapply for a general. Or we could reapply for an individual, which would probably be more restrictive, but could be, that could be done. Or we could say, we have another place that is now going to meet our needs. It is short-term now. I do believe that the long-term goal is, if it's not on Mr. Alsager's property, the Fish and Wildlife is working hard to try to find a place very close to that or adjacent to that. But we have to take that step by step. So the thought is, what should we specifically be purposing the Camp Three parcel for? And of course, being the educator that I am, my heart breaks when I drive by it every day, sometimes multiple times a day, knowing that we are not using it.
Yeah. Yeah, so at this point, we have an option for a trap club, which we need it. And we got one. So thankfully, that's there. So is it, the question is, is this the time now to remove that from that land use for the Camp Three parcel? And focus on a different plan, a revised plan, so we can start using that property for environmental education and trails, so.
And I would throw out there too, we will have to do a revised plan. And we will have to outline where the trails go because the trails will have to avoid wetlands or at least potentially have some kind of pathway. I got kind of really deep down in that hole, like, you know, do you have an area where you have a bridge where you could cross it over so you're not interfering with it? Talking with Mr. Grossman made some good points about the Burnell Pond studies, which is an excellent learning opportunity for our students to see, you know, how it changes within the year. But right now, we're still in a situation where, until we have a plan and know what we're doing, we're really limited with what we can do. I just want to really go on the record and say, the purpose of the parking lot was to get the students off the bus, off of Highway A for safety. The placement of that driveway in Culver was deemed by the county as that was the safe place location to do it. And that, and that's just a simple fact. Could it be changed? Could it be altered? I'm sure it could be. But again, a much more comprehensive, specific plan and layout will have to be drawn up in detail, addressing all these things we've learned about, the implications.
And would that be MSA revising it or not?
Good question.
That's a really good question. And I think you probably, as a board, need to discuss that. I will also say, because I said, I am not the delineator gal. And we tried to do things very transparently since I've been here. And I will own it if I have messed things up. I don't believe so. We hired the professionals to do the work for us. We worked very closely with the DNR based on the information that we had. It has never been kept out of the public eye or out of the DNR that there was volunteers who cleared that area that did the stumping. That was not a secret. That is, in fact, we knew it. It's there. You see it when you drive by. I feel that based on the results of the findings, it does come back to what was called flawed in not fully and accurate preparation by MSA in the delineation that they did for us. We've invested a lot of time and we've invested some money with them. I have informed Mr. Kriesel about the findings and shared that with him. I have not had a response back at this point. But I think that's going to take some thought from you all. Do we ask them to revise and prepare? Do we feel confident that that's going to happen? Have we learned what we need to learn? Or what is our confidence level? To put it very directly.
I think the easy answer is to take the trap off the table again and then revise the original plan. My fear is that the language in the affidavit that they used specifically talks about how we're already over the 10,000 threshold.
Not, not already, just with the plan plus the extra. So as long as MSA were to include what was done and take that into account in the new design, that would change things.
So, yes, then after that, are we going to still face another issue and be involved in litigation again? That's the only fear. But the easy answer is the trap.
I guess the question would be on what, though?
Yeah, it comes on to a point where it's our property and as long as we fit the conditions of the permit, it's still our property and we can do as we wish to a point. I would say, MSA is, yes, they've stuck a lot of time in. I'm not pointing fingers. There's a bunch, there's, it seems like there were a few things from all sides that kind of worked together in an unfavorable fashion. But with the time they've already put in and the data that they already have, I guess I would, I would continue with where we, with them to redesign.
Well, I guess the question is, is do we remove, do we change the conceptual approval of the plan? And if we do, which land use? I'm assuming we're talking the trap range. Do we remove the trap range from that land use?
Yes, and we just make it for environmental education and trails. Make it a two-part instead of three-part.
Any other questions or is someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to consider revision of the conceptual approval of the Camp Three land use to environmental education and trails only and remove the trap range.
I'll second.
All right, so a motion on the table for Michelle. Second by Alicia. Any other questions?
Just a quick comment, I guess. Ann and John, I mean, thank you for your comments. You know, our goal has always been, you know, first and foremost, education and to make this usable. And we've been doing our darndest to make sure we are open with everything. We've gotten inputs from students, teachers, obviously, community as well. And we're really trying to go about doing this the right way so that everybody gets a piece in on this, so. But thank you.
All right. We have a motion on the table. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes five zero. All right. We will continue to move forward. And I guess we'll have to discuss our next steps. No doubt, the first step is to continue talking with MSA and see what our options are. And then that would have to come back to the board. So, and, yeah. As you mentioned, it's hard to see it just sitting there. And tremendous enthusiasm right from the beginning and people wanting to jump out there and get going and use it. And I think our district has always been looking to provide outstanding opportunity for all of our students. And provide opportunities in the safest manner and efficient manner. And I guess originally, we thought that was the best way to handle it. And so we will adjust and move forward and try to get our students out there as soon as we possibly can. All right. We'll go right into the School Forest Camp Three update report.
As you have the final findings, I had shared those with you. I don't know how much you want to, you know, rehash all of the particulars, you've read it. You can discuss it. I have talked with the attorney, Ron Stadler, who represented the district and who is working with the DNR. They have not debriefed and gone ahead and made what you call a plan. I have let them know that this meeting was going to be happening tonight and that you would be discussing. and that you would be discussing where we are at. There is suggestions as to what the DNR or the district could do as far as appealing process, et cetera. I do believe with what was captured in the report, that it's pretty clear that it's based on what they found as the preponderance of evidence, that it was not accurate for their decision. I do think that it would actually require potentially, not necessarily, it's going to stay being the general wetlands permit, but we might even have to be moved into looking at an individual permit. We have eliminated a big piece of consideration of property being impacted by removing the trap range. I do think that the, the parking lot can be scaled down. I think it can be shifted. I think it can work nicely within the lands that we can protect and, and avoid. And I do think it's much more possible to meet the needs of what we're saying here. So, there's more they will be sharing with us, but that's kind of in a nutshell where we're at.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any other questions or comments on that? All right. Next, we go to the NEXUS facility study update.
This will be very brief because we had our big meeting, you know, a couple of weeks ago. And I am working, like I said, individually to kind of lay out right now. My plan is to make almost like a spreadsheet series, working with Caleb, the maintenance, Jack, and Dave, as to what we are addressing as deferred maintenance and, you know, other maintenance issues, and then safety and security and the potential for spaces being expanded. I will bring that to you at the next board meeting. We'll meet early so we can get much more in-depth with that. I am meeting with Rob Brown and Brian Winterley again tomorrow just to discuss next steps. I did tell them to put on the brakes a little bit because, you know, it felt like I was being asked to come up with survey questions, which we have to have this information in first so we can have informed survey questions. I don't want to ask a question that I'm not very comfortable with knowing the answer from the background. You know, like, this is what our budget supports. This is a bigger project. This is long-term. So, that's where we're at.
All right. Very good. Okay. Other questions on that? All right. Very good. Next, we go to district-related positive happenings. Here we are.
Conservation speeches are almost done. We have another speaker we're going to have heading down, and that'll be Eddie Shanick, who is going down from sixth grade. We had our spelling bee last Friday, who sixth grade won again.
[laughing]
We're going to go for a clean sweep. We got Gino Lee in the curbs tournament coming up yet. So, that was won by land and running, and then James Kamela took second. Our student council raised or donated, I guess, almost 400 items to the Three Lakes Food Pantry through a little food drive they had. And then I'd also like to thank Bethany Puffer for coming over and doing a pep band performance for our kids at our school, so.
Junior High had an incentive trip to Skeetrol. It was pretty successful. I think the kids really enjoyed themselves. It was one of those days where the weather was beautiful. All of the runs were open, which was amazing because of the snowfall or lack of what we've had. And, you know, we didn't have one single glitch, not gonna.
No broken bones?
I'll have a busier report in March on the other side of solo ensemble. And I believe there'll be a forensics competition between then and now, as, as well as the Nicolay Career Competition Day. That's March 1st.
Academic banquet.
Academic banquet coming up. One thing I wanted to mention, though, from, from the good news side of things is, probably by tomorrow, when you venture into the lobby, you'll see some updated, upgraded, new furniture, tables, chairs, for our kids to sit at during the day and folks to use before and after school. That's on part of the efforts, not part, wholly on the efforts of kids. That's a collaboration of the senior class, who, as we learned from the Washington DC trip, that was and wasn't, and was and wasn't, and was and wasn't, became professional fundraisers. And they had some money left over. They already bought a water bottle fill station for our fitness center that's been installed for one month now being used. And then next on their list was updating the lobby furniture. So, senior class this year donated to it. The student council made a donation to it. The graduating classes of 21, 22, and 23 had a little bit of money left in their fundraising dollars. That was appropriated towards it. And the district picked up a shipping cost, which for that many tables and big chairs is not a small fee either. And the great news was, the shipping was supposed to show up on March 7th, and it arrived yesterday. The line just got mostly all put together, right?
Nice.
Nice.
A decent updated furniture there. I think the junior high office is going to get some of the stuff that's out there now.
Yeah. We inherited, so.
But I, I mentioned that story just because it's kind of cool that the kids are saying, well, let's not plan a fancy senior trip. Let's, let's figure out what we can leave in the building and school.
And I just want to hop on that because the meeting that we had with the student representatives, when we talk about our culture that we've been working on, what is a blue jay this year? And we've gone to the students and the student council, and the public piece is coming, but we really had to get that. Their intention to give back to the school after they're gone just truly speaks to the characteristics that we're looking for. And I'm extremely proud of them. They really thought it out well. And as one of them had said, we don't need a party. We need to have something here for everybody. So, I give them a lot of credit.
Yeah. Doesn't get any better.
No. Very proud of them. Phil, did you have anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
They're not, not for long, but we will have plenty after regionals are over.
Yes, we will. All right. And then, this isn't brand-new news, but Mike was awarded, recognized at the convention for being a 20-year school board member, which
Which he didn't go to.
But guess what? They tracked him down. So, Mike, this is for you. I was asked to present this to you on behalf of WASV and
All right.
Your awards, so.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Terry, can you present that to him one more time?
Sure.
See if I got it. If I got it, hang on.
Stay pretty nice.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Awesome.
Yeah. I tried to run away.
I told you.
Did a good job for a while.
Yeah. All right. Okay. So, anything else on WASV correspondence updates?
No, just that there's a lot of eyes on what's going on in the finishing up of the legislation. And they share with me reports. Again, this is all happening in real time. So, more to come, and I will be able to update you where things actually ended up at our next meeting.
Very good. All right. Thank you for that. That brings us to adjournment. I will seek a motion for adjourning.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All right. Motion by Alicia, second by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. None heard. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Thanks to all that attended tonight. And appreciate you joining us, and we'll look forward to seeing you next month.